I'm calling meaning to order at five oh four. And the first order of business. First order of business is to review the. Uh, the the minutes of July one. And I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Okay, I guess I'm seconding it. Okay.
Alright.
Alright. Ben, right?
Yes, good job.
Oh mama, okay. So, let's start with the update on on this, the uh STEM and robotics.
I guess I'm seconding it. Okay. Alright.
Alright. Ben, right?
Yes, good job.
Oh mama, okay. So, let's start with the update on on this, the uh STEM and robotics.
I'm gonna share those slides if that's alright. So just give me one second.
You have till five or fifty, I'm sorry, five fifty.
Oh, I'm green, so that means I'm live.
You're on. Yes.
Good to know.
Before we start, I wanted to welcome Anne Anne Marie Mancini, our new assistant superintendent. And now I'm done.
Alright. Alright. Nice to see everybody. Um, I wanted to start, I uh wanted to share this graphic just to kind of orient the the work that happened over the summer. And really is kind of the focus of my work in my role on the science and STEM and. You know, part of, a big part of my work is to support core science instruction. Um, so that involves, you know, curriculum updates and oversight, that involves professional learning with teachers. That involves taking a look at assessment data, but really making sure that our core science instruction at elementary. Um, is is in a good place. Beyond core instruction. When it comes to science and STEM, we have a lot of initiatives in the district that are meant to. Engage and inspire kids in science and STEM. Um, in some cases, they're um after school programs, in some cases, they are activities related to our magnet programs. But this kind of outer ring here from computer science. To farm to school, to marine science, to biomedical, to manufacturing. Engineering, drone competitions, first robotics, those are all activities. That are happening somewhere in our district and that are meant to inspire kids to love science and. To eventually hopefully pursue careers um in science and STEM. So, I kind of use this as a guide for my work, you know, it's like supporting that core instruction first and foremost. And then strengthening and building opportunities for kids in those enrichment areas. And always kind of like with an eye on. Do we have a pathway for kids to follow these opportunities elementary through high school? So, for example, if a student, you know, falls in love with Lego robotics in fourth grade. Can they continue that passion as they move through middle school and high school? And for a lot of these opportunities, they can, and for others, there are opportunities for us to maybe look for additional programming or resources. And then kind of that outer circle is about career connections, career awareness and internships. So, that's another way I kind of see this work kind of benefiting our kids is core instruction. Drives these enrichment opportunities, kids hopefully fall in love with these things, and then it could eventually lead to. Internships, careers, and that's a little, that career piece is more on the six twelve end. But I interact with those six twelve counterparts. To try to build those pathways from the bottom up. Does that make sense? I just kind of wanted to orient that.
Yeah, yes.
Like as we look at opportunities and like look at partnerships. There's so many things out there that I try to just tie it to, these are the things that we're trying to build. And trying to, trying to move towards. Alright. So, first update was about our STEM and robotics camp. We've been running this camp um over the summer for a number of years now. Um, it used to be a two week camp this week, um due to budget, we wanted to keep the camp going, but we ran it as a one week camp. Highly, highly popular with our K through five students and families. Um, we had over a hundred and eighty students um attend with like ni- over ninety percent attendance. On on a daily um, every day, uh and that's including a small registration fee. That we ask parents to pay, um one, just to make sure that they really are interested in coming. We've had, we had that over the years where people would sign up and then. Yeah. It wasn't on the radar. Yeah. So, um but we also use that registration fee, I mean thirty five dollars for a hundred and eighty students, like it's a. It's a little bit of money. Yeah. You know, um so we can use that to offset materials costs. A lot of these science and STEM programs are materials heavy, and it's something we have to order year after year. So, it's a way to kind of offset that a little bit. Now for um, for families that are maybe low income, you know, free and reduced lunch, does that fee get waived? It does. Alright. Yeah, we don't do means testing, it's if if we advertise it, you know, financial assistance available, and if a family asks, it's granted, yeah. Yep.
You asked my question, so thank.
Oh. Yeah, and I don't have the percentages with me, um we definitely have families that. Yeah.
That's great, yeah, that's great, thank you.
The focus of the camp is um STEM, of course, so um engineering, computer science, some robotics and team building. With grants over the last few years, we've been able to actually buy up a lot of materials that we store up here. Um, and kind of we've got a good program that we run, so in the way of. Replenishing materials, we're in pretty good shape. We've got kits, we've got curriculum, we've got robots. Um, so we've, we've tried really hard to make, make sure we keep those costs down. Yeah. To keep running the camp year after year. How many staff members? Um, this year, we had about. Uh eighteen, eighteen teachers. And then about seven or eight pairs, yeah, with a hundred and eighty kids, um. We try to create half these classes that are like around fifteen. Yeah. And so you end up ten to fifteen, you want it to be a little bit more of a camp type environment. A little less of a classroom environment, so about eighteen staff. Yeah. And then pairs to support kids um that need that support as well. Yeah.
And where's, where is it held?
It's at Charles Barnum.
Okay.
Yeah, we've held it at Charles Barnum for a number of years.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I'll show you, we, we always survey kids. The survey results always come back really, really strong, so that we surveyed all of our third, fourth and fifth graders. Did you enjoy the camp activities? Seventy five point six percent were five, you know, like, like, yeah, like a lot. Yeah. Nobody in the ones and twos, you feel like you were learning new ideas, new skills and being creative. Again, really, really positive scores from kids.
I'm gonna stop you for a minute. I, I just wanted to make sure that Ms. Mancini knows that she can participate, ask questions, whatever.
Of course. Um, and again, one of the big purposes of this camp is to inspire kids to learn about STEM, I always think about how we've got. Magnet schools that all have different themes and some are more STEM focused, but we have kids at every school. That are really interested in STEM, um so the camp serves that purpose too, we get kids in every single elementary school. Um, and and kids are, are, the data shows like clearly being inspired to learn more about that.
Do you ever um. Uh, talk about the Coast Guard Academy because that's a STEM school.
Yeah, um, we've done, so at Catherine Kalnaski, not, so the answer to your question is not necessarily with the camp. But at Catherine Kalnaski over the years, we've partnered with their cyber unit. And actually brought in some of their cadets that are in that cyber program. To speak with kids and do some autonomous robot demos and. It's been, it's been a couple of years and I definitely reach out, um they're a great, great resource. Yeah.
That's great, thank you.
Um, so that's, that's STEM camp, you know, it's, it's something we hope to run, you know, year after year and um. Families love it and kids love it. Yeah, that's, that's great. Well, talk robotics and drone mini camp next. Is that alright? I'm just gonna cut the sun down, I got everything.
All in your hands.
Alright. Good, um, this was new this year, um, we ran a small robotics and drone mini camp. At Catherine Kalnaski, um, we opened it up to all fourth and fifth graders in the district. Uh, we started, it was just going to be me as the instructor, we were doing this as like a no overhead camp. Cause we had an instructor, we had a space, we had materials. Um, I had twenty students sign up in about thirty five minutes. Yeah. When it went out, um. We were able to, to hire and bring on one other teacher. Registration fee was fifty dollars, same policy, anybody that, that. Have, you know, asked for robotics and drone mini camp, if anybody that asked for a waiver, we, we granted that waiver. Um, focus was on kind of simulating our first Lego League competition experience, so kids built robots. They built this really cool Lego table that has missions and we simulated what it would be like to actually go to a, go to a competition. So, it's really, really fun.
And we, do we have the Lego League in the no pool? And then you have a robot system.
Yeah, so it's a good.
Maybe the elementary has all this matrix over.
Yep, it's a good example of one of those pathways, so like Catherine Kalnaski, everybody. K through five, that's part of the magnet theme, has experiences with Lego robotics. Uh, we've had teams there over the years and then kids are able to join the middle school team and then eventually. Um, the aluminum Falcons, so that's one, that's a good example of like how we're trying to build.
And we're bringing the campus back to the high school, we're gonna manufacture, gonna work the shop. E D selfness.
Oh, really? Oh, good.
Out with us, they're, they're even gonna help us with grants to get the equipment. But just, they're right now in Pleasant Valley and it really needs to be structured.
Yeah, yeah.
I gotta get them home and then we gotta have programming, so they'll come back to you. For, for, they do have a manufacturing one and two, but we really need that going, that is a huge pathway for being here in Southeastern Connecticut.
Hmm.
They get really interested in, in that, anything hands on.
Yeah.
Should have never gone away.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So the other half of this, this mini camp was a drone competition camp, that was something new, we started last year through um. Through some grants, we, we started teams at Charles Barnum, Catherine Kalnaski, the middle school. And the high school with Terry Henkel's um Maple Junior Ratsy Program. So we had a full elementary, middle, uh high school stack of drone racers. We had the scrimmage last year at the middle school where the elementary kids competed against the middle school students and the high school students. Um, again, like super fun, kids loved it, um highly engaging. So, half of this mini camp was first Lego League robotics and the other half was drone racing. How, how does the drone thing work with the uh five miles from an airport? They're indoor drones. Oh, wow. They're educator called.
You have to use a gym.
Yeah. Yeah, code drill and E D U, so they're, they're light, they're small. Yeah. They crash, it's not. Yeah. Not gonna be, gonna be the end of the world, but it's cool, you buy these obstacles and it's all cane with a, with a grate that we got and you set them up and. Kids are piloting drones through hoops and arches and having to retrieve obstacles and it's just. Oh, that's cool. Fun to watch, so. So this was a chance to give kids across the district that maybe weren't at one of those schools a chance to participate in that. Hmm. Um, we, it was very cool, we were able to support this mini camp with a couple volunteers from the Aluminum Falcons. So we had a couple of the high school students come down and be mentors uh for the younger students, so. Um, that was a great experience and this is something we're definitely hoping to expand for next summer if we're able. But the hand was clearly there, the kids love it. Um, so would love to run like multiple sessions. Yeah. If we're able to. Yeah.
And did I hear you say there were parent volunteers?
Um, we had parent volunteers um when we ran the teams during the school year.
Okay.
We, I didn't have parent volunteers during the summer.
Okay.
Yeah, we had staff and enough high school kids to, to support it.
That's right.
Yeah. Alright, so that was our robotics and drone mini camp for the summer. So next up. Core science curriculum work assessments. So, um. Our, we have a, a science task force, elementary science task force that meets. Three or four times a year, we're calling our science leadership team, elementary science leadership team this year. And over the last couple of years, we've been identifying. Either barriers to high quality science instruction. Or additional supports that we need in order to improve teaching and learning in science. And we've done surveys and um, we've had lots of conversations, one of the things that's come up over the last couple of years. Um, is access to really good quality assessments in science and we've had discussions about do we use. Uh, do we use and how do we use the, the NGSS interims? Or do we use more of like a performance task type assessment? Um, so we decided to focus curriculum work in science this summer on developing really good assessments. Starting in grades four and five, we want to expand this to K one and two and three as well, but we started, we decided to start with, with grades four and five. Um, we worked with a consultant from the Connecticut Science Center. They have a, a, a teacher academy called Mandel where they go out and they do professional learning. A lot of people know the Science Center for the exhibits and the, the museum, but they actually have a pretty robust professional learning department as well. So, worked with them and teacher teams to create NGSS aligned. Unit assessments for, or almost all the way through all the units in grade four and five, so. I click on grade five. We're posting this um on the curriculum site, um, this is being shared out at grade level meetings. But in grade five, these are our, our science domains. Where. Yeah. Better? Is that better? So we've got our science domains and we've got a couple of resources that teachers use to support science instruction, we've got um. Catalyst curriculum, which is what Creck develops um over the years, and we've got a, a resource called Mystery Science. That teachers use, both of these resources address specific science domains. Um, we found there was a little bit of a gap with the catalyst resources. Um, there is some physical science embedded in these other units, but it was an area where we needed to supplement um to make sure that all standards are being met. So for each one of these science domains, we've linked up. The units that correspond with each other, so teachers know what resources are available, and then we developed a common assessment. Um, based on the standards for that science domain. So part of this work was going back into the standards with teachers and really looking what, looking at what kids are being asked to do. Because science now isn't just like about knowing things, kids have to be able to do things as well. So, um, this is an example of a grade five assessment. So, we link the standards that the assessments be, uh, the, that the assessment is addressing at the top. And really try to develop questions that would provide teachers with evidence of student thinking. That's the big thing that teachers want, um, we wrestled with, do we use the I A Bs, the interim assessments? They're useful, they're a tool, but you have a hard time on the science end sometimes figuring out what kids are thinking. You can see if they got something right or wrong. But a lot of times that's where your info stops. So, we wanted to develop something where teachers could sit around the table and actually be able to see what kids know. And what they don't know and what they can do and what they can't do. So a lot of the questions are open ended. Um, a lot of the questions prompt students to make claims and support with evidence. A lot of questions prompt students to use models. A lot of questions prompt students to use data, either interpret data or um create charts and tables based on data. So you'll notice like very few questions are multiple choice style, like we really want kids to be able to. Show what they, what they know and, and what, what they can do. Um, we linked up every question with the actual standard that the question is, is trying to assess. So, we're taking this approach of. If we know what the standards are asking kids to do and we've got a really good assessment question that can give us evidence. Then we're able to, to do something about that.
And then what do you do in terms of, of, of actually implementing those things?
So, implementing.
The, the, the um, the, the results of the, the responses.
Yeah, so that'll kind of be our, our next step this year, like we want to see like what kids know, what they don't know, what they do, what they can't do. Um, and then hopefully be able to fold those things into additional instruction, so for example. A lot of times kids are um, have to create models. Both on NGSS assessments or on other types of assessments. We might find evidence that kids are either really good at creating models or we might find evidence that kids struggle to create models. Um, and that's a skill that we can address in future units. So, the hope would be identifying those strengths and, and areas for growth. And then using instruction moving forward to address them.
These math later degree work, do they pay more to do? Um, you know, looking at the student work together and assessing, maybe even dividing a hot and pile.
We talked about that.
That they, you know, there's a pathway to this, it's not either right or wrong, some of these open ended, you can see the development.
Yeah. Yep, yeah.
Their work.
Yeah, we just talked about that at a grade level meeting at, at, at Fames River doing exactly that, like having teacher teams bring evidence of. You know, this is a strong response, this is a medium response. Yeah, yeah, and, and then having good conversations about what to do, what to do about that, but we figure like. You have to know before you can, before you can take those steps, right, and that's, that was the focus of this work, like, we want a tool so that we know.
And how do you, when do you implement that? Is that, well, let me not ask a question, let me just have you answer my question, how do you implement it?
Yeah, so we'll give, we'll give the assessments after those, after those unit assessments. Um, I'm sorry, we'll give these assessments after those units are taught. Um, and then I've got grade level me- meetings that I schedule with e- each building multiple times throughout the year. We're having our, kind of our kickoff ones now and kind of, and launching these assessments. But our second cycle will be to look at that first assessment and have those conversations.
And know they're done during professional workshop.
These will be done during, during tests, during, during a, a teacher special. Yeah, at a grade level meeting.
We do the same thing for ELA.
Yep.
We have Sarah Beth now doing the literacy. And so she'll be checking in at all the grade levels and being able to offer support, especially with the implementation of the new program.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So really excited about this, um, and the feedback from teachers has been, has been good so far, looking at them, we haven't, we haven't used these tools um yet. Uh, but I'm, I'm excited to, that we'll, we'll, we'll be able to, to, to really have a tool that we could see what kids know. The other piece to this.
But we still do the I A Bs because with the S back, sometimes it's not. What the question is asking, it's how the question is being asked, so the kids clearly know how to respond. So, just even the practice of, of taking that and it's a test that they have to manipulate, so sometimes there's a little. Um, virtual lab that they have to do, you know, or something that they have to do. And then they have to assess and reason with it to answer the question. So it's pretty comprehensive.
Yeah. And that's the other piece of this, so for every unit, every science domain, we've also linked up a common interim assessment. That we want s- uh, teachers to give students practice with.
And are we doing three, four and five even though they tested them five?
We're, we decided this year, we're gonna do four and five.
Four and five, yeah. And then maybe three.
We've wrestled with three a little bit because they don't take the test for a couple of years and. We, we gotta see where the value is there, like, when I look at them, like, is it more valuable to give a third grader? Yeah. Practice with something they're not gonna do for two year, or is that time?
Yeah.
Better spent on good instruction? Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, but fourth and fifth graders, absolutely, and so we've moved to, we used to just provide like. Here's the list of I A Bs, here's the list of interims. You decide like which ones to, to, to do, and teachers still have that resource, but we're getting more focused and specific and. These are, these are the ones we want to make sure everybody has, has exposure to.
And that's, we've been doing that in literacy, so that makes sense.
Yeah. Yep. So we've got one more to do, we've got a full suite of grade five assessments, um, and we've got three out of four for grade four. So the hope is to finish that, that last one up during the school year this year. With, working with Connecticut Science Center and, and a teacher team, a grade four teacher team. Anything else about assessments? No.
You're the scientist.
What's that?
You're the engineer, you're the scientist.
I don't know, wh- well, what time of year do the assessments happen? The, so these unit assessments will take place on. Yes, alright. Yeah, like a science unit's about nine weeks. Alright. You know, some are a little longer, some are a little shorter. Yeah, alright. Yeah.
Were you able to look at the wi- wisdom curriculum to see if there were? Science related to NGSS topics or nonfiction?
There's some.
In four and five separately at all?
Five, not, not so much. Now five, of like all the grade levels, uh. Five, who would know that I'm in five is the one that's probably the, the most social studies oriented. Four, four, there's a couple of connections.
We've also talked about looking for texts that would be grade level text. And text sets or whatever that correlate with this, and I'm sure they have them in the classroom. But maybe just, you know, if there are any changes or any classes that might need more. Reading materials.
Related to science.
Related to science.
Yeah. Yeah, we can bring that up at our science leadership meeting too.
That'd be interesting, it's.
Yeah. We've been really, and one of some of the feedback from teachers and, you know, obviously everybody knows like. The big push this year is getting what you've done off the ground and, um, which has meant. Schedules have changed and, um, people's priorities and energies are, are, are there because it's, it's a big, it's a big deal. Um. Yeah, so what is it, the, it, out of the teaching day, there's a substantial amount more time, correct? There is. Maybe not in fifth grade, but in. You know, I think across, uh, without the numbers in front of me, I think it's across the board. Yeah. Part.
Well, they've always had. Always one hour and a half, but now it's additional half hour, forty five minutes too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is why I like, I mean, science is important to me, but I also, I really believe like. Kids need science instruction too, like they, they need exposure to science and hopefully. Learn to love science at an early age. Yeah. So, but, and I, I was an elementary classroom teacher, like we have to be efficient. We have to make sure that we make it, make it accessible for teachers to teach. Um, and that's kind of the focus of this, like, if you've got really good assessments and teachers are getting good info, then they'll, then they'll use them, right? And we've got resources that are efficient and. You know, easier for teachers to use, so we want to take out all those barriers.
Right, and support are important.
And supplies.
So even though we had limited funding, I think I used Title One funds from the district. To say, because that was really important, that each school had the five thousand dollars, so they had the kits and the materials for the hands on science.
Yep.
We did that. And it was a lot, but.
It was another barrier that came up though.
It was another barrier.
Teachers have to look for materials and they have to, so, yeah, we were able to this year provide just in time science material so people have what they need. Hmm, so. Alright. So, also did some science and magnet summer professional learning this summer. Um, we had two things that, uh, that went on. One, we provided Project Learning Tree, uh, which is, um, it's a national initiative, but deep. Department of Energy and Environmental Protection in Connecticut is actually the. The, the provider of Project Learning Tree in Connecticut or the facilitating organization. So it's all about outdoor education, it's all about environmental science specifically geared towards. Things like forest literacy. Things like forest literacy, um lots and lots of connections to our science curriculum. Um we've, you know, done a really good job of getting outdoor learning infrastructure. At a lot of our school campuses and having outdoor classrooms and learning spaces. So this professional learning was meant to give teachers some specific tools and resources. To take kids outside, regardless if it was science or not. Um and help them feel comfortable taking kids outside, but also so that they've got resources um to connect to to connect to science curriculum as well. It was a half day P D, we had about eighteen teachers, um including a couple of administrators. We had somebody from every elementary school and I think somebody from the middle school. And again, it's just great, we we actually went out on the trail, we we held it at C K. Um they brought all the teachers out on the hiking trail and led them through some some outdoor activities that that they could go do with kids, so. And feedback from teachers was great and supports both science instruction and it also. Supports our magnet programming too, definitely at Thames River. Um and they had a a pretty good amount of teachers at this training, but really magnet programming at any of our schools.
And this ties in with the um the trails, the outdoor classrooms and stuff that we're doing.
Yep, yep.
I think that's a topic I really need to get to the council and the R T M, I'm gonna go back to the whole. Of the initiatives, but there's been a lot of questions about the outdoor classrooms and how were they afforded and why? Rather have.
Yeah.
And I think you all did with Go S A present to the town council and they were pretty impressed.
Yeah.
With what the work they were doing.
Yep.
And you spoke to the to the town council?
We presented, um so I pers- we pers- remember Clint and I presented here, I think that was in the spring.
With the Gosa.
With Gosa, with Groton Open Space. Um and Go Groton, our Go Groton initiative.
Yeah.
And we presented a similar presentation to the town uh a few months prior to that.
It was a collaborative grant that you received, right, from the town and the school district?
Yeah, from Children Nature Network, yeah, so we, the town had to accept that that award, so. Our Go Groton team presented to the town council. And then I think a couple other members of our team, I wasn't there, but presented to the R T M. So it's all kind of connected, like we we look at like this Go Groton initiative is all about equitable access to nature for kids. And the school system just plays such a huge role in that. Um and there's so many connections to learning, so it's. Outdoor infrastructure, our learning infrastructure, it's P D for teachers, but all these things connect back to helping kids learn, so. Yeah. Uh so that was what, that was one um thing this summer, the other thing professional learning wise this summer. Um we worked with the magnet team, so we've got magnet specialists uh that support our elementary schools. And as a magnet team, we are, we were looking at the book, it's called the Project Based Learning Handbook. For elementary schools, so we read that as a team this year and on our P D day uh in August. We had our 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 book study conversation about that book.
Last year you did science notebook.
Last year.
They really loved that.
And again, that's an initiative that can support regardless of your magnet being project based learning.
Yeah.
Could could be a piece of that.
Do you have any extra copies of that?
I might. I might.
Yeah, I'd be interested in looking at it.
Yeah, how can I get it?
I'll drop it off here.
Drop it here?
It seems like I'm here like twice a week.
Yeah, Joyce will get it, Joe.
Alright, yeah, let me see if I can.
Alright.
Well, uh can't you just um give it to the um courier?
Yeah, 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 she'll get it. Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so that was professional learning for the summer. And then I wanted to give you a quick update too, because we just, there's so, we're so lucky.
Yeah.
To have so many organizations kind of this. So many organizations in town that are willing to partner with the school system and provide opportunities for kids. Um and we're in constant communication, whether it's Project O, whether it's Ness, whether it's the Nature Center. And all these organizations have been doing an amazing job of going out on our behalf. Um looking for opportunities to support our kids, so. They'll go out, they'll find opportunities, grant funded, and they'll come to us and say, is this something that you'd be interested in? Is this something that would support one of your schools? Um and if we sign on with support and and they get that, they get that money, then we're able to take advantage in those those opportunities.
Yeah.
Um and it's been really great, it's it's like a constant networking. Right, just being like in touch and communication about what we're up to, what we're looking for, um and checking in on where they are. So that work is ongoing throughout the year, but I wanted to highlight just a couple that that were new over the summer. Um Groton Open Space Association, they secured um four thousand dollars in grant funding. Shortly after we had that meeting in the spring.
Mm hmm.
Um and we just came to an agreement with them to use that, we're gonna target that for our K one and two students. Um to make sure that they get these outdoor field trips throughout the year. We're gonna start with K and one and make sure it's accessible for everybody and then and then layer that up to two, so we should have just about enough.
And you were gonna find a matching grant too.
Yep, there's math, there's, and that's the thing, there's there's other grants out there um that we can take advantage of, like the sustainability grant, so. So Groton Open Space, that that opportunity continues to expand. Um we've got a nice partnership with Yukon Avery Point. Um they did marine science after school programs at both C K M S and Thames River last year for fourth graders. They ran four week programs in Lake Baker's Cove watershed area, all focused around um. Around oysters, because they're a foundational species.
Yeah.
Area, that money came through a grant that Andre Baumgartner received. And got that over to Yukon and we were able to partner and take advantage of that. The other cool thing about that one, they set up an oyster tank at C K M S, which is really cool. And we were able to hire two Fitch High School interns to take care of it over the summer.
And was one of those um Gi- 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 Johnny Drab, or was that?
I don't think so.
No.
Not for this one.
Okay, that was, that must have been the. C K. Aluminum.
I don't think so.
I think that was for aluminum Falcons.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
But I, that was a neat part about this partnership, one, it like, it provided after school program, it provided a cool experience in school for kids, but then also. Fellowship, you know, for paid fellowship for kids after uh during the summertime.
Yeah.
Uh Mystic River Watershed Alliance uh just came to us, this again, this was through um Andre. Um we're gonna be doing programming at Mystic River. Again, this is marine science based, this one's all about the the owl life. Fish, which is another foundational species, that's kind of cool, you got like oysters on one side of town, you got owl life on the other. Uh so we're really trying to get kids up to speed on on these important species in their neighborhood. But we're looking at Mystic River Watershed Alliance to do design thinking programming um during play block at Mystic River. So again, they they've got the money, they're gonna come in and support our teachers with programming and and provide these opportunities for kids. Um electric boat, uh there's the E B Boat for Kids Manufacturing Program. It's a six week program that introduces elementary kids to different careers in manufacturing, like. Being an electrician, being a welder, uh being a shipfitter uh and others. Uh we're expanding that programming this year, it's gonna be at C K, Thames River, Charles Barnum, uh and this year Mystic River. Um again, Mystic River probably during the play block, because it's, it's hands on and it's fun and uh it's a good fit there.
What about N E A?
Getting there.
Ryan, is he interested?
We're gonna, they're interested.
Yeah.
We're gonna keep expanding.
Okay, good.
So this this stuff happens ideally when the teachers um in planning time or something like that, so the kids will get kind of. Instructed by somebody else to.
Different at different schools, so um at schools like C K and T R, it might take place during a science block. Um because it's STEM related and connected to standards. At a school like Mystic River, it might take place during the play block, which is part of their their magnet enrichment, a piece of their magnet.
And C B has the discovery block, so it's same kind of thing, yeah.
Um. Got to have a classroom teacher in there.
And alright, yeah.
There, yeah, they're providing resources that push it, but.
Yeah, alright, yeah.
Supervised as well, yeah. Um so that's ongoing, um N R S, which is National Estuarian Research Reserve. Um they have a partnership with the Invention Convention. So Catherine Kalnasky has done the Invention Convention for years. Um this year, N R S is partnering with Invention Convention to do. Uh encourage kids to invent something that will help Long Island sound. And N R S is gonna provide featured guest speakers that will be speaking at C K. Um and come in and do lessons with kids about inventing. So again, like. Free.
Yeah.
Um and the last one, I'll update you on Pfizer, um where again, we're always reaching out to people. Pfizer is updating their uh outreach to the community. They've developed all of these smart kits, uh which are hands on science activities for kids. Um and they send scientists and to schools to do that, these experiments and students. So we're gonna, we're gonna start implementing that at Mystic River this year as well. So just got, and there's more, but I just kind of wanted to give you a snapshot of.
It's a lot.
We've got so many great partners and so many resources in the community and so many. Organizations that want to support us.
Yeah, and then the field experiences too in Mystic with the nature centers and.
Yep.
That are guaranteed for grade levels, so no matter what school they're in, we know every K one, two will have. Different opportunities.
Yeah.
That they have assured experiences as well.
Yeah.
So is this stuff that is basically all kids are gonna see parts of this, or is it? A little bit more locally done, like in certain schools? I mean, obviously, everything doesn't happen for all the kids, but.
Can't, right, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But is it, but there's, I I assume that parts of this go to like all kids from like three to five or four and five or.
Yeah, and we kind of look at like how to balance it and also sometimes like where it fits best magnet wise. And those, that's not like it's the only criteria, but you know, we've got. Marine science activities happening at Thames, right, like you you want to have those experiences there.
Yeah.
But you also might want to have some marine science at a school that that doesn't have it.
Yeah.
Kind of balance that out, so kind of look at like, get a a big picture of like, what are all these things that are happening? And where are their gaps, like are we doing more K one, two and not enough three, five or? And and kind of kind of balance it out like that. But like Susan said, there are certain things that are guaranteed experiences for across the district, um that's separate from this.
Yeah.
Like like the nature center at grade three, like that's something.
Everybody does.
Everybody.
Well, even the Project O partnership and the Ness, we've been talking about making sure there's an assured experience at a grade level with each of those. Like to really give them an opportunity, whether they're in that magnet or not, it will correlate with the science standards.
Yep.
So two of our um board members for the Martin Luther King Scholarship, one is a. An executive at, or a scientist, I'm sorry, at um Pfizer, and the other one is an engineer at E B. So if um. It, you know, if if you need more contacts, I can, I can, I can definitely get those. And the other one I wanted to ask about was uh our Martin Luther King Scholar Johnny Drab. And I, I think he worked this summer with um. Uh with the aluminum Falcons.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'd like to see more uh interaction between the scholars and the kids. Yeah.
Uh yeah, like especially whenever we have summer opportunities, we have to look for ways to include.
Okay.
Our our high school kids working with younger kids.
Well, I even think about the family hikes and on weekends and kids are looking for service time. That might be another thing that, you know, we can get, whether it's a hiking club at the high school or something like that.
Yeah.
Going and then working with the families.
Yeah.
So we have four minutes, what else do you want to say?
I think that's it on my list.
This is fabulous, I had you in eighth grade, right?
Oh, I, so I was West Side.
Oh, no, then I didn't, rats.
Were you Fitch, you were at Fitch Middle, right?
Fitch Middle, like color, yeah. But alright, you're you're a product of of our schools, that's fabulous, that is really.
And his daughter is a freshman at Fitch.
Would you live, right?
What's that? Isn't. Yeah, yeah, my daughter is as well, yeah.
Yeah.
So Ben, thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Yeah.
Let me share that work, so appreciate it.
Alright, great.
It's exciting, these are the things that really engage kids too, and they want to read and learn.
Yeah, i- is there, um so is there a lot more room for this, like are we gonna ideally? Grow this a lot more for these programs, or are we running out of time in the day to find them?
Well, that's why we do the after school and we do the summer school.
I don't think we're, I mean. Oh, we might be close, but but you never know, like after school programs.
Yeah, you can do is, yeah.
Right, and things like play blocks and discovery blocks, where you've got a little bit more, you know, innovation and flexibility. Yeah, so I I think what we're always listening.
Yeah.
And seeing what's out there.
Mm hmm.
Figuring out if it makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, and we did get feedback um after our August twenty seventh P D day that said that. Elementary teachers were interested in how to integrate some of the magnet theme into their day with their standards. In science and social studies, so they definitely want to do more of that.
Yeah.
So I'm going to um comply with with uh Clint Kennedy's request to stop at.
Alright, should we do referral tracking sheet?
Oh, everything's fine.
Alright, I'm good with that.
It really is, we went over it last time.
Alright.
Okay, Ben, do you have anything else you want to share?
That's it.
I just, I.
Just a few things going on.
Yeah.
Fabulous, yeah.
Alright, motion to adjourn.
Second.
I don't know if I'm allowed to say that.
Okay.
Alright.